All those present and notice of this regular meeting of November 13th, 2024, has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the City Clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the City Clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on November 8th, 2024. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weemer?
Here.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first item is a resolution postponing and ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 4, licensing, registration, and business registration to the meeting of December 18th. It's moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, two is a bond ordinance providing for the 63rd Street Flood Resiliency Project in and by the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey, appropriating $3 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed-3-million-bonds-and-nots of the city to finance the cost thereof. It was introduced and passed as first reading held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 13th, is now before the Council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Uh, this is very needed. It's for Uptown-by-the-City Line 63rd Street Flood Project, and I vote aye.
Second reading is by title, a bond ordinance providing for the 63rd Street Flood Resiliency Project in and by the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey, appropriating $3 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of not-to-exceed-3-million-bonds-or-nots of the city to finance the cost thereof. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The Council President will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, three is a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various items of public safety technology and equipment for the city's Department of Public Safety, appropriating (I'm trying to think if I have the right amount) $2,550,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $2,550,000 bonds or notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized by and in and by the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey. And this was introduced and read past the first reading at the meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 13th, is now before the Council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by the Council President. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various items of public safety technology and equipment for the city's Department of Public Safety, appropriating $2,550,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $2,550,000 bonds or notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized by and in the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, State of New Jersey. And the council is ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The Council President will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, four is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the redevelopment plan for 173-179 Avenue F., which is identified as Block 442, Lots 6, 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 13th, is now before the Council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by Councilmember Booker. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the redevelopment plan for 173-179 Avenue F., which is identified as Block 442, Lots 6, 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The Council President will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
No. I think, uh, I had a very polite, very nice conversation about this. I was hoping that it would include workforce housing to benefit teachers, nurses, cops, firemen, and various other individuals who work within the city. Given the scope of this project, I think it would be perfect for something like that. And without including that, I don't think it would be, uh, I don't think it would be a good idea to put something up like that without this, an inclusion of some sort of percentage of apartments going towards the working class. Excuse me. So, thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Uh, my intent is to vote aye. I did spend an awful lot of time with the developers of this property as well as with the attorney, um, representing them. The, the building is actually quite well done, uh, very tasteful. It, I'm, I'm not quite sure if I should feel proud or, or thankful that somebody actually listened to me when I, when I spoke, but it, it was done ever so well. And I'm, I'm certain that's much to Director Skilander's credit, because he probably just didn't want to hear me anymore. So, anyway, um, it was very well done. There was a lot of precautions that were taken into consideration. It is, um, by way of number of units, a smaller unit with just over 50 units. Um, so not, not a tremendous amount, um, or wiggle room for change. I think the city has more than met its quota for our affordable housing requirements. Um, and although, as I say always, I would, I would love to see our developers, um, promote and encourage our workforce, um, housing by perhaps a discounted rate for our public servants that remain in the city. Um, I cannot compel you to do so. So nevertheless, um, I'm not opposed to the development and I vote aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Yeah, this is a very nice design to the building. Uh, I went over it as well with the developer and lawyers and, uh, it's basically, uh, seven stories, 52 units with stacked parking. Um, and I think it's gonna be good and I like the project and I'm gonna vote aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the redevelopment plan for 102 and a half dash 116 Avenue E., which is identified as Block 467, Lots 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 13th, is now before the Council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the Council President given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the redevelopment plan for 102 and a half dash 116 Avenue E., which is identified as Block 467, Lots 10, 11, 12, and 13, and 14, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The Council President will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I vote no for the same reason. I think the argument that we've done enough, so we needn't do any more to help anyone is, is not a, a winning argument with me. We've, you know, uh, it was a year ago this month that I introduced, uh, a rent control policy that got turned into a study where four months passed the due date on that. Perhaps our director can address that later in the meeting. We haven't received the proceeds of that study. There was also an introduction of potential workforce, uh, housing ordinances to go forward. That too was still being, you know, still being drafted, still being talked about. I hope to see it in the new year. I remember it was a year ago now because I was hoping to use the spirit of the season to move the hearts and minds towards helping the working people who need to make the rent and go out and buy gifts and put food on the table, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I just think we shouldn't institutionalize not looking out for these people. And I, I think that's what's happening, so I vote no.
And Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain property by the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey from Nat Realty Company, Inc., which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held Septem-October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 13th, is now before the Council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the council as a whole moved the resolution that the ordinance be given the second reading. So on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And second reading is by title, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real property by the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey from Nat Realty Company, Inc. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The Council President will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
And, and just as a point of order, there's a resolution that we talked about at the caucus that just changes the name, uh, of the seller. Uh, on our tax records, it was listed as Nat Realty, uh, and I believe the actual seller is Goldie Oklahoma LLC. Mr. Goldman, who, George Goldman, who owned that property, I think, uh, when he retired, moved to Oklahoma. Uh, I, I know Assistant City Attorney David Rosazuski is here. I think he can just, before you have any discussion on this, maybe you can go up to the microphone and explain how we came to learn of the new owner's name and it's a de minimis change so we don't have to worry about having an, have another hearing.
Hi. Uh, yes, dur- during the course of our investigation into the ownership of the property, uh, we were informed by the attorney for the seller that, as Mr. Coffey stated, that it was the Goldman family who owned it. It was not Nat Realty. And also, this was confirmed by way of a title search, which we conducted apparently in or about the year 2012. The title was transferred over from Nat Realty Company, Inc. to the Goldman entity, which Mr. Coffey named.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosazuski.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Do it as a whole again?
Sure. And on that resolution to close the hearing, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering the, uh, amending the ordinance to state the proper entity as a seller as Goldie Oklahoma Family LLC. Would like to move it.
As a whole.
And on that resolution to amend, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Uh, this is for the Park on Avenue C. and 19th Street, and, um, I vote a resounding aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
As a whole.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Yeah.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic, which is a loading zone at Harvest Man School, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 13th, is now before the Council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Booker, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The Council President will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
So move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, eight is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. And this is to add nine restricted parking zones, delete three, and relocate one. It was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held October 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of November 13th, is now before the Council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the Council President, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7 Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The Council President will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Good evening. Jean Perry, 77A Hobart Avenue, Bayonne, New Jersey. I'm here to discuss the property located at 85 East Second Street. I understand the council, can I comment on this for our last meeting? Because there's some, uh, situations going on with the state of New Jersey. But, Mr. Coffey, I took your recommendation. I received the letters from the state of New Jersey today. Uh, so this is just more for public knowledge and for the council. The, one of the violations given was the facility has failed to prepare, uh, provide their tonnage reports since 2023. So the violations are still open in that matter. I have to say, it has been better down there. They're using, uh, a power warden now on a regular basis. But in one of the documents, I haven't got to read them all today, but I just wanted to pass this past the council real quick for the zoning purposes. And this is from the state of New Jersey. The facility is a Class B recycling center located on Block 359, and it lists the lots 4, 406, 10, 1, 2, 3. Hudson County, this regional cycling center is authorized to receive 1,500 tons per day of source separated materials, concrete, brick, cinder block, asphalt, stone, rock, ceramic materials, woods, chip pallets, unpainted and non-chemically treated wood from construction and demolition contracts. Contractors, construction companies, municipalities, and so forth. Class B aggregate must be concrete, brick, cinder block, rock, stone, so forth. Not anywhere in this does the state metal. So I don't know whether the city can look at that next with the state. And also too, I received a couple of pictures the other day, which I don't have with me to share, but the metal's now falling into the water. So I'll be calling the state again tomorrow. But someone was down there fishing and gave me a couple of bumper photos and some scrap metal in the water down by Gorman Field. So again, I'm gonna ask the council to please continue to look into this matter and don't let it suffer. And to add to this, my neighbor, a good friend, his son actually has been my good friend over the last few years, has decided to move his family out of Bayonne because he cannot stand the breathing and the issues of not letting his children go outside. So again, we're now, we're losing residents that grew up here, raising their children here, and are just tired of all the stuff we're going through downtown. Thank you, council.
Oh, nine is a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment for the city parking utility, appropriating $250,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $250,000 bond or note to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey. And a resolution fixed on Wednesday, December 18th at 6:00 PM at, and the Dorothy Harrington Council Chamber, which is a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It's moved by the Council President. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. LaPalooza?
Aye.
Oh, 10 is a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements and acquisition of various vehicles and capital equipment, appropriating $7 million thereof, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $6,666,500 bond or notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof, authorized in and by the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, State of New Jersey. And a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, fixing Wednesday, December 18th at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy Harrington Council Chamber, which is a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?[1503.01] On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
Oh 11 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 33, planning and development and regulations, not zoning as it states. And the resolution fixing Wednesday, December 18th at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. The resolution is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
Oh 12 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 37, historic preservation, and a resolution moved by council member Carroll fixing Wednesday, December 18th at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
I would just, I think we have a large contingent of the St. Andrews crowd out in the audience tonight. So, this was introduced, and next month, as you saw prior to the public speaking portion of this meeting, there will be a chance for this to be now on the official agenda, and anyone who wishes to sign up before the meeting can speak on it at next month's meeting for five minutes.
Actually, since it's up for hearing next meeting, they don't have to sign in. You just raise your hand and you can speak.
You could just raise your hand and walk right up. So, there we go.
And I was going to ask if Dr. Ryan could come up and give a few comments on the historical And sorry for the short notice, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you, council president, members of the council. I'm appearing here tonight as the staff person for the Historic Preservation Commission. At its meeting on October 22nd, the commission passed a resolution recommending the historic preservation of St. Andrews Church, which was constructed between 1922 and 1923. It has 22 Munich-style stained glass windows from the firm of Franz Meyer of Munich. Those windows illustrate the life of Christ. The exterior of the church consists primarily of reddish brown dress brick with limestone trim. And according to our Historic Preservation Ordinance, the master ordinance, there are eight standards for historic preservation, and the church meets five of those standards. So, that is why the Historic Preservation Commission recommended this to the council, and those standards really involve architecture style and the role that the church has played in history. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Excellent.
Okay. Oh 13 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter seven, traffic, and a resolution moved by council member Perez fixing Wednesday, December 18th at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
Oh 14 has been removed. Consent resolution for the communications is a resolution ordering the communications to be received and filed. It covers C1 through C6. Any questions on the communications? On the communications, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye. Mr. Lopelusa.
And then we have our officers' reports, which also is moved by the council as a whole, and it's a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR1 through OR3. Any questions on the officers' report? And on the officers' reports, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
Consent resolutions is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, is a resolution ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. We are removing CR12, CR14, and CR21. Any questions on the remaining communications? Which one?
CR10, CR13, and CR16.
So, CR10 is for a green acres grant. The city is applying for that grant, and it's from the state, and it's for a multi-park project. It's for 28th Street Park as well. You want to add a little bit to that? Yeah. Sue, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand there.
I just wanted to clarify. So, I think this is good news. These are not grants that we have applied for. These are grants that are already built, and because of procedural discussions with DEP, we had, I've talked to you about this before, Thailand's, Thailand's, Thailand's. We had to get all these things. So, everything on this agenda this evening is so that we can file for payment, which I think will make Ms. Mauer very happy. These are all built, these projects. We have other projects that will be built, but right now, this allows us, I spoke to Tom Cotter like at length, he's been very helpful on it, we will be able to collect back about $3 million that we've already put out. And we have an ongoing program, we'll be back to you next month with the new projects. But, so, these are projects that are built, and he's just getting the agreements in because they had Thailand's issue, which means Thailand's is that you have lands in the water. It was a little complicated. All settled, all done, all great, moving forward. But, they're not new ones. They're actually built. You can walk out on them.
Thank you, Sue. Mike, is that good? Are you okay with that? Okay. Mike, did you have another one, or?
No, just those three.
Repeat them again. That was 10. What was the other? The 11 and 12? 11 and 13, is that it?
12.
Okay. So, that really, that took into effect for all three, really, right? Sue, that's.
Right. What we have is, we already had the money for CR, if I'm, I'm just coming back. We already had the money from CR12, so we don't have to worry about that one. But, CR10, 11, and 13 are so we can cure some past paperwork deficiencies. They're all open, so we're curing the deficiencies with these agreements.
But, just for Mike, we also have, we have been granted new approvals, and as Tom gets those built out, I mean, we have another $2 or $3 million already approved. So, Mike will see more projects this year.
Excellent. Thank you, Sue.
Okay. Thank you.
So, on the consent resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R1 has been withdrawn. R2 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk and/or any other appropriate city official is or hereby authorized to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents necessary to enable the city to exercise the one-year option to renew agreement number CY24001 with NW Finance as amended for financial advisory services for the city under the same terms and conditions for a period commencing January 1, 2025 through December 2025 for a total amount not to exceed $100,000. Would like to move it.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R3 authorizes the mayor, city clerk, and/or other appropriate city official to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents necessary to enable the city to exercise the one-year option to renew agreement number CY24002 with NW Finance for financial advisory services in connection with redevelopers under the same terms and conditions for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for a total amount not to exceed $75,000.
Move it.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R4 authorizes the administrator of the parking utility, purchasing agent, and other appropriate city officials to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the continued gateway, hosting, and notification services, and procure parts and repairs for the Matt K. On Street Parking Meters from Matt K. Meters, Inc., throughout the calendar year 2025 for an amount not to exceed $88,000.
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R5 authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Bayonne Economic Opportunity Foundation to provide administration, execution, and oversight of the City of Bayonne's Community Development Block Grant Program and any other HUD program services for a maximum amount of $220,000 for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025.
Some move.
Second.
Five. On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R6, 7, and 8 have been withdrawn. R9 authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Richard Campesano Esquire for professional legal services to act as the planning board attorney on behalf of the city for a period commencing January 1 through December 31, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $24,000 payable at a rate of $2,000 per month for all legal and administrative duties associated with his functions as the board attorney, and in the event the planning board is involved in litigation, said amount not to exceed $15,000 for a total contract amount not to exceed $39,000.
Some move.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R10 is also an agreement with Richard Campesano for professional legal services to act as the planning board attorney in connection with developers for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025, payable at a rate of $185 per hour for a total amount not to exceed $50,000.
I think just the point of clarification also need to be made that it's with developers and redevelopers for the escrow accounts here. I know it says just developers, it should say developers and redevelopers.
Wow. All right. That has to be changed.
Thank you.
And that's also going to be the same for number R12 too, with his contract.
So, on that resolution for developers and redevelopers, Mr. Perez moved it. Who'd like to second?
Second.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R11 is an agreement with Richard Campesano for professional legal services to act as a zoning board attorney on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $18,000 payable at a rate of $1,500 per month for all legal and administrative duties associated with this function as board attorney, and in the event the zoning board is involved in litigation, said amount not to exceed $10,000, thereby making the total contract amount not to exceed $28,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R12 is for professional legal services from Richard Campesano to act as the zoning board attorney in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025, payable at a rate of $185 per hour for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Some move.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
13 is awarding a contract to Hudson Health Employees Assistance LLC for professional mental health services to provide employee assistant mental health services for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $39,000.
Some move.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R14 is awarding a contract to John T. Deduces, M.D., for professional medical services for non-uniform employees for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R15 is also a contract with John T. Deduces for professional medical services for uniform employees for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Some move.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R16 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Donahue Durand, D'Doria, and Tompkins LLC for professional accounting services to act as the municipal auditors for the city for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $110,200.
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R17 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Chasten, Lamparello, Malone, and Capuzzo, P.C., for professional services to act as a municipal tax attorney for a period commencing January 1 through December 31, 2025, payable at a rate of $175 an hour, plus reimbursement for reasonable expenses for an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Move it.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R18 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Rutterman and Roth LLC for professional legal services in connection with arbitration hearings, litigation before the courts, negotiations, and perk hearings involving various unions and the City of Bayonne connections with labor-related matters for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Some move.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R19 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Arthur Thierbolt of Apozizzi's McDermott, Mastro, and Murphy, P.C., to act as a special labor attorney for professional legal services in connection with arbitration hearings, litigation before the courts, negotiations, and perk hearings involving various unions and the City of Bayonne in connection with labor-related matters for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Move it.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
R20 is authorizing an agreement with Civil Solutions for professional engineering services in connection with the maintenance of the City of Bayonne's digital tax map for a period of one year commencing January 1, 2025 for an amount not to exceed $24,500.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
I have a couple of add-ons. The first one is awarding the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey its property tax levy for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, and ratifying, confirming, and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith. Would like to move it.
Move it.
And a second.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa.
Aye.
And two is authorizing the purchasing agent to request bids for a cleaning service for the police department.
Some move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker. And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
At 3 is approving the notice in lieu of deed notice for all or portions of the following dedicated rights away: Chosen Few Way, Goldsboro Drive, Flagship Street, East 40th Street, Harbor Place, Constitution Avenue, Center Street, Port Terminal Boulevard, Cross Lane, Stanley Avenue, Garvin Street, Parkside Street, City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, acknowledging the use restrictions on the property and the obligations imposed on the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson detailed therein, and authorizing the execution of a notice in lieu of deed notice, the soil remediation action plan application, and related documents for the property.
Mr. Skender, if you could come up and explain this, please?
So this request here is on all the streets on Moppy. So when the city purchased the property from the federal government, it was subject to, you know, some environmental conditions here. All this is acknowledging, if it was private property, there would be a deed notice on the property acknowledging the environmental or potential environmental contaminations, specifically landfill in this case, given the fact that the entirety of the base is, you know, all landfill. So this notice in lieu of a deed notice is just putting the world on notice that the roads, you know, may contain some environmental contaminations based on, you know, landfill. It's all subject to already the entirety of a remedial action permit that's been existing for over 20-plus years at this point, and this is just acknowledging, again, that it's now changing from one property to the roads. It's just, it's a, you know, regulate regulatory permitting process through the DEP.
Basically, like it says, acknowledging the use restrictions on the property.
Yeah, that, they call it a rap. So the rap had, again, certain conditions, acknowledging, you know, some of the issues out on the base because of the historic landfill, you know, from the 1930s and 40s. Like I said, now that the fact of the property's changing, being redeveloped, being called different names, is acknowledging, you know, all these different streets.
Okay, thank you.
Would like to move it?
I'll move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
I have one more before Jake does his, and it's from Donna L. Maurer submitting the supplemental debt statement as of November 13, 2024. That's what the bond ordinance is introduced earlier. Would like to move it, receive it, actually. It's a supplemental debt statement. It's just a receiving file.
Move it.
Second.
And on that, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Okay. So I want to do add 4, I guess.
Add 5.
Add 5, okay. This is a condolence letter that we spoke about at the caucus meeting for the council president from Hoboken, Jen Guillateno, who, she had a remarkable life, and we just want to send a condolence letter to her, so I'd like to add that to the record. And if we could do this as a whole?
As a whole.
I think my colleagues are all in agreement and sign the letter.
So on the condolence letter, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
We have a couple more, I believe.
All right, we've got one for an area in need study. It's just a referral over to the planning board. It's a resolution authorizing directly the planning board of the City of Bayonne to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether certain property located at 958 968 Broadway, known as Block 78, Lot 44, within the City of Bayonne constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to local redevelopment and housing law, and authorizing preparation of redevelopment plan for the property. That sounds all great. What that is, is the gas station that's been across the street from where, the car wash and gas station, both on 46th and Broadway. This is just a referral over to see if it qualifies. There's no, you're not committing to anything, but this is, that's the site.
I'll move that.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
Do you want to do the next one? Municipal Pay, right? Okay.
Next one is... So hot off the presses that I just did the resolution right here. As of January 1st, we want to be able to go online with credit card payments in connection with short-term rentals, the Airbnb ordinance that you passed a couple months ago. In order to do that, we've got to have an online payment ability, because most people will be paying this by credit card. Our database and our program that we utilize in the City of Bayonne to keep track of our properties and payments in connection with those properties is SDL, Spatial Data Logic provides it. The only type of program that works with this is a thing called Municipal Pay. A great number of municipalities utilize this, and the company that runs, I just say, recently bought Municipal Pay is Auto Agent Data Solutions, LLC. There's a fee for credit card usage through the program, and there's no cost to the City of Bayonne for the use of the credit card. It's totally by the user. So I have a request from, I guess it's Municipal, no, Planning, Zoning, and Development that we enter into a three-year agreement with Auto Agent Data Solutions, LLC, having a place of business at 433 Plaza Real, Suite 75 Boca Raton, Florida, for three years. Their charges, electronic checks is a buck fifty, debit cards or credit cards are 2.65% with a $3 minimum. That's for planning and zoning. So they've got a platform that had to be downloaded onto our site. There is a fee for that. It's a fairly de minimis fee that the city have to pay. That'll come out of the budget of planning, zoning, and development, but this contract would call for three years for online credit card payment portal ability at no cost to the City of Bayonne when a credit card payment is made. And that's about all I know about this entity. I just know that we don't have it set up for January 1st. We're not going to be able to start essentially prosecuting and keeping track of the Airbnbs and short-term rentals that we have in town. And I know recently you've gotten some emails, complaints from people from throughout the country have come to visit the great City of Bayonne and had a less-than-stellar experience in their Airbnb, and it's almost buyer beware in this type of real estate atmosphere, and some people were made very aware when they got here. In fact, they, one individual contacted our fire department, had to come down, and it turns out they were staying in an illegal basement apartment that didn't have any other access and no ADA accessibility. So this is going to allow for us to start policing that and regulating it, and as your ordinance is pretty strong about fine people who are not in comportment with the ordinance.
Is this, so this is for the owner of the Airbnb who has to file and pay for all of the permits that they would require from the city? They'd put it...
We're not getting in on the Airbnb business. We just need to know who's using it, and we find out somebody's renting. And it's fairly easy, for those of you watching at home, if you've got an Airbnb and you're advertising, we know about it. Just that right now, we have a limited ability to do something about it. That's going to end soon. We know, I can tell you firsthand that there's somebody out there with over 900 reviews for an apartment in Bayonne, all stellar, but not, you know, that means this thing's been rented for several years on a daily or weekly basis, and we need to know who's doing that, who's renting them out. We need to know, we put limitations on who can rent the space out. We didn't totally eliminate it. We allow for the fact that a smaller homeowner might, that might be the difference between making their mortgage or not, but it's got to be an owner-occupied site, and we have a whole lot of other strictures that they have to follow, and if they don't, they're getting fined. And I believe it's $1,000, is that correct, Joe? $2,000? No, no, I'm talking about to just sign up. It's $1,000 to register your place.
$7.50 for renewal.
$7.50 for renewal, and it's well worth the $1,000 because the fines that are intended to not registering and us finding out that you are utilizing Airbnb to supplement your income would profoundly be more than $1,000. And as we're learning now, Neil, you got an email, I think you got an email also, everyone's gotten an email, people are pretty quick, and we have to direct them to Airbnb saying your complaint should be with them, not with us. Thank you for notifying us, because now we're going to go after them. That doesn't really help the person that came to rent.
Is that...
What's your question, Neil?
I was going to ask, with those people that are replying, I would imagine would want to comply with everything they need to, to avoid further fines, but having that credit card on file, is that, is there language in this?
Credit card on file, it's they want to pay their $1,000 right now, they'd have to come in with a check or money order to pay us. This allows them to sit on their computer, fill out all the information.
The car fee, right.
Yeah, it's to process their payment, really.
Okay, but I'm just curious, in the event fines are written and unpaid...
The city, the city has no access to the data.
That's a different system. That's a court system.
That's why you give the hotel the credit card.
It'd be a wonderful idea to have one-stop shopping there, but no, we can't. It's not like a hotel where we can keep your credit card, and if we find out there are extraneous charges, we're going to put them on your card. Can't do that.
Mr. Drowsky has a question. Was this an ordinance or a resolution? Didn't hear that.
For this?
Was this an ordinance or a resolution?
For the Airbnb?
No, for what we're passing now, the add-on, not for what we're talking about.
It's a resolution.
Resolution. Okay. So we're passing a resolution, so we must have all the details. So you said it doesn't, no cost to the city, so you download it for, you know, minimal fee, which we won't count. So there's no yearly fees involved with making sure you're getting the updates, any security patches, because it's credit card information, all that, I mean, happened to be in the IT business, and normally you pay for ongoing support in case you have a problem.
I did say that there's a nominal fee in order to institute it. I think it's...
To institute. I'm asking about ongoing support, and how do you make sure you're getting the security patches, anything that goes on with any software, because that's just, you know, software life cycles, right?
So, again, this is a supplement to SDL, Spatial Data Logic, on that, so with the Airbnb application, SDL is the one that is, would be monitoring that, and this is a supplement to that software program on that. So everything for that Municipal Pay is supplementing SDL, is all run through them with no fee to the city.
So there's no fee? And we have an agreement that tells us what, how their maintenance plan is? I get it, because...
For the maintenance, what I mean, for the maintenance plan of that, that is, it is on Municipal Pay for them to do that, to make sure that it complies with SDL and the program language there.
I don't think you understand the question. You have, oh, today happens to be the day, yesterday, Microsoft posted all their security patches for the month, monthly, every month, the first Tuesday, right? The other month, they put them out there. So...
Could you speak into the mic?
We review them, and we implement them, right? Like you guys on your machines here probably are implementing security patches so that you don't get data breaches and residence information don't get taken. So that's what I'm saying, so they don't charge you for that, they're guaranteeing that, and they, because normally, I know they're, you pass the fee on, but the city is the one asked collecting the data even through there, so the responsibility. I just want to understand the terms of the rules.
Similar to SDL on that, the...
I don't know that for, I'm talking about this ordinance, this resolution, what the
Similar to Municipal Pay or SDL, Municipal Pay will have the same, you know...
There's a portion of the contract, I don't know if you can speak to maintenance.
Well, there you go, perfect, perfect.
So it says, "Company will host and maintain the Municipal Solutions as part of the services. The merchant shall not be responsible for the expenditures that the company may incur in relationship to hosting and maintaining Municipal Solutions." That's all it says there, so.
Okay, I'll take that. So there's no, there's going to be no fee. I mean, just if you're passing something, you should have all the details in the resolution written at the time you're passing it.
Well, I can tell you, there's a provision in the contract that says, and I quote, "Company shall make the online payment portal solution known as Municipal Pay available to the merchant at no cost, subject to the terms and conditions set out in this agreement." So if it's up and running, if any updates, patches, and everything would have to come to them, and we're being told that it'll be made available for us for use at no cost to the merchant. The terms and conditions are basically if it's planning and zoning, it's 2.65%. Actually, it's the same for planning and zoning in all other departments.
I'm not, again, I'm not asking about the...
It's available seven days a week, 24 hours a day, with availability equal or in excess to 99% per month, excluding scheduled maintenance windows. Doesn't say we're paying for maintenance.
Okay, that was a question.
They provide, at the end of the year, this will have to provide a report to our CFO that trues out what we took in and what we expended.
Okay, thank you.
So on that resolution, who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
Anything else?
E and G one, right?
Yes, that was in the consent.
That was a consent, right?
Yes.
In consent also?